Welcome to our meeting this Monday, March 8th, 2021, 6 o'clock. Students will be live at the Boardroom in the 887 Building. I think all this meeting is ordered as to select the call roles. Mrs. Fisher?
Here.
Mr. Gayheart?
Here.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Here.
Mr. Martel?
Here.
Ms. O'Donnell?
Here.
Mrs. Ray?
Here.
Mr. Scarrow?
Here.
Ms. Grakowski?
Here.
Mr. Reed?
Here.
We do have a quorum, we will continue. I will note that this meeting has been known as first day statutes. I think we have some community participation. Yes, Mr. Brian Pody is here to present a chair of project that he'd like to do for the school district as part of his Eagle Scout project. It doesn't require board approval, but presentation to the school board. So for the timeliness, I suggested that we do it at this meeting. So and then I can work with the principal and grant approval for the project. Go ahead.
As you know, I'm an Eagle Scout and need to do the project for to get Eagle Scout. And what I've asked Mr. Thomas, the machine teacher, is also asked for, is that our shop's very unorganized right now. So he was proposing that I help them organize the shop out and build a different style material storage so that we can use the space better and let it be more usable.
So you're going to make quick racks for the...
Awesome.
Excellent. And I'm sure we can, you have the plans and everything for that. And then you work at the high school and that, it sounds like a better idea. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much.
We need to put a plaque on it as well when we...
That's right. Yeah.
Very good.
Thank you.
Then we'll be gone. Oh, come on, stay there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck with it.
All right, then we have the Jackson Elementary Student Presentation. I'll turn it over to Tammy, who has the whole presentation up for you guys. And Tammy, you're going to have to step up then. It's over.
All right. Going in the background, I'm sorry. Um, tonight Chelsea and Janine are going to present about a family engagement evening we had this fall.
Hi there, my name is Janine Passler. Can you hear me okay? Okay, so last year Chelsea and I came to the board meeting to present our cafe night that we had at Jackson. And we really wanted to do a similar night this year. So we decided to think about how to make it virtual. And we came up with a book flicks idea based off of Netflix, as you know. And what we loved about last year was we loved that we had highly engaging texts. We had our staff members participating. It was a family engagement night where families came into the school and we provided snacks and love of reading. So we wanted those exact same elements in our book flicks night. And we really had to work hard to think about how we could bring that in on a digital level, which was a bit of a challenge. But with our hardworking staff and flexibility, we were able to bring high-quality literature, staff participation, a snack for families, and family engagement, all in a virtual format. So we were really pleased with our book flicks this year.
Hey, hi, I'm Chelsea. And yeah, like Janine said, it's, we were unsure of how that format would go. I think it really exceeded our expectations. We've had great feedback from staff and students and parents. So it really mimicked the results that we saw last year. Some highlights that you'll see up on the screen. We had 31 staff members participate, which was so exciting to me. We had the vast diversity of that. You know, we had teachers, administration, and aides even. Can I make a video and they read a book out loud? So what that looked like was we ended up, we sent slips home and students who returned their slip got a curated box sent home. So they had a bucket with popcorn and fruit snacks and hot chocolate and directions. And then last minute, we decided that we wanted everyone to be able to take something home. So we quickly got more resources and got buckets put together. And every family, every family in Jackson went home with these directions and a snack to have. So we were really excited to be able to send it home to everyone. And in those directions, they also got an email from Tammy with the first screen that you saw that Janine spoke on. And on that were links to books that teachers read aloud. And I think one of the really neat parts was how each teacher took their own spin on it and presented these books in different ways. So again, we had 31 staff members, everyone received this kit. We had, within that kit, there's also a slip that students could, throughout the week, write down five titles that they read along with their favorite and send that slip back. We had 100 completed slips this year, which we're really excited about. Most videos had over 110 videos. And then when students returned their slip, they were put in a drawing and we made 28 books of all the titles that teachers read. So that was exciting for kids to be able to take some of those great books home as well. Our school favorite was read by a first grade teacher, Mrs. Zwig, Dog's Villa. And then if you want to keep clicking, the next three slides are dress pictures of some of our book winners. So again, it was a great event. Tammy or Janine, if you have anything you want to add. I think as a distant, something that's kind of exciting is that Westside and Tibbetts are going to try their own version of the event this month with Read Across America. So it'll be neat to see what the spin is in the other two elementary buildings. And that is it, if you have any questions.
So did these slips have five books read on it? So am I interpreting that correctly?
So, good question. So actually, the what, so in the box were directions, but they all, there was also an all-school email sent home with a Google link to the first screen that we showed. It showed two kind of book flicks slides that looked like Netflix. So when families clicked on that Google slide, they could click on any one of those books and they would be directed to a video with that teacher, staff member, reading that book out loud. So there was, we had 31 staff members and 28 books total because a couple teachers read it together. So they had 28 options to watch. Some teachers had screens, had just pictures of them reading the books. Some had more of a digital format with the whole book on the screen. The five is coming from, instead of expecting them to watch all the videos, we had them just write five that they watched and send that back in.
Is this something that the students will have access to going forward now? Is there a way for them to like, for the students that didn't participate, now that it's already been pre-recorded, can they go back and re-watch?
Yeah, and that's kind of the nice part of this format too. And when I said before how we kind of changed last minute to send one home to everyone, that looking back at it now, at, you know, in an equitable lens, we're really happy that we did that because we did see that a couple of our students that won the book giveaways were not students that returned their original slip back. Whether, you know, parents didn't see it in folders or it got lost in translation. We did have some people that still participated that weren't originally going to do so. So yes, it was great in that aspect and they should still have access to that.
Oh, yeah. Amy did say something in the chat. She was just thinking like...
Yeah. There it is.
She just said, I want to thank Janine and Chelsea for the amount of time they spent finding the event. Based on their success and leadership, our other elementary sites called, this idea provide all families across the district. The Jackson staff did a fantastic job sharing the book selection with families too. What a selection of great titles. Thank you, Janine, Chelsea, and our Jackson staff. If that was up close, I couldn't read that. All right.
Very fun.
Yeah, thank you. Very good, thank you everyone.
Thank you very much.
Oh, I do have a question related to that. Now that you have that presentation done with, what was it, 120 titles on video? Is that something that's being utilized? Platform where I know you talked about other kids can go and access that. I don't know, is it being utilized in another format or?
I can speak to that. I know that because of our situation with lunch, we have teachers who have students in their classrooms at lunchtime. And I know some students, some teachers have pulled up a book a day to have their children listen to the book that was read by a teacher.
I know when we were younger, we could have a cassette tape and have somebody read a little bit of us.
What? Toby's like, what?
That's old technology.
Did you go listen to that tape?
I did.
Did that go with like a slideshow or something?
Yeah.
View master.
She didn't say H for...
Sorry.
Thank you very much, Jackson, for all your work. We appreciate it, good work.
Yeah.
Are you interested in him doing this?
I'm, if she texts my daughter, I need to have that for her. Or I go to bed.
I think I have it at home.
Oh, that's great.
Next, we got approval of our school board minutes. Regular session from February 22nd is attached. Any questions? Comments? Concerns?
No.
If now for everyone to be, hear nothing, so looking for a motion.
I'm open to approve the minutes of the February 22nd, 2021. Where does the school board meeting at present?
Is there a second?
Second.
So moved to second to approve the minutes of February 22nd, 2021. Regular session, school board meeting is presented. Go call them. Mrs. Fisher?
Yeah.
Mr. Gayheart? Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
I don't know why I got a Martel tracking and Ms. Grakowski.
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
So some other fund bills, Mr. Reed?
The general other fund bills this evening covers checks number 142 E41 through 142 473. Wire numbers 822 to 836 ACH. Check number is 292 311. Options renovation wire number 821. And one voided check number 142 240 in the combined amount of $1,321,163.42. And there was a, providing some additional information on several of the bills.
Questions for Mr. Reed?
That's fair enough.
Yeah. Yeah.
Hearing none. Looking for motion.
I move to approve the general and other fund bills of March 8th, 2021. Check numbers 142 341 to 142 473. Wire numbers 822 to 836. ACH check numbers 292 to 311. Options renovation wire number 821 and voided check number 142 240 in the combined amount of $1,321,163.42 as presented.
There a second?
I am.
So moving second to approve the general and other fund bills of March 8th, 2021. Checks number 142 341 to 142 473. Wire numbers 822 to 836. ACH check numbers 292 to 311. Options renovation wire number 821. And voided check number 142 240 in the combined amount of $1,321,163.42 as presented. So call them. Fisher?
Yeah.
Mr. Gayheart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Ms. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Ms. Grakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Supporting special night on the student report.
So at the high school, what Annie just came from was, uh, I don't know. She just came from a fundraiser that they're hosting at Panera Bread for Hosa.
That's where I went, it's in my car, it's in my house.
It'll be going until eight, I believe. And if you just show them like a flyer, you can take a picture of your phone or they were handing out flyers in some classes at the high school today. Then 25% or 20%?
I'm not sure the exact percentage that goes up, but...
But of the order will go to Elkhorn Hosa.
Thanks.
The junior class is also holding a fundraiser on March 16th at Annie's Burger Town, which I know for a fact is 25% of proceeds. And I believe it's going to the prom fund, but I am not entirely sure. Student at Elkhorn High School has just released a new podcast where he interviews like our student athletes around like the school. The Evan Christman Podcast. I did give the first episode a listen, it's actually kind of interesting.
All right.
And then, March 15th will mark the next Maker Monday. And this time you will be creating greeting cards. At the middle school, the Elkhorn Autism Support Team is hosting their annual chili cook-off on March 15th from 5 to 7. And there will be a raffle as well as an online auction. And the chili will be available for takeout or curbside delivery. They had their virtual choir concert on March 2nd. And their act filter cut classes were joined virtually by Dr. Philip Burns, who is a DVM for large animals at Elkhorn Veterinary Clinic. At Jackson, we heard a decent amount from already. They are celebrating, along with the other elementary schools, the month of March, which is Children's Art Month. And they are going to be celebrating it on March 13th, where they're going to have a fundraiser partnering with the Nailed It Studio in Elkhorn. Other students have been able to use VR goggles, Ozmo's, Ozobots, BlueBots, and then iPads in their library. Don't know what Ozmo's, Ozobots, or BlueBots are, but the kids really enjoyed them. On March 4th, the students partook in a career day where they all dressed up as whatever career they aspire to be. And there's some fun pictures if you want to look on their Facebook. At Westside, their fundraiser night for the Nailed It will be on, um, let's see, I believe it'll be on March 20th. And just more in depth on that, 25% of the proceeds will go to the school. And they give you like this sign that's in the shape of Wisconsin. And then you get to pick two colors and then you just get to paint it wherever you want. And I believe you can reserve like a spot in the studio itself to paint it or you can just buy it and take it home.
Yeah.
Then on March 4th, they had a virtual family reading night. And there'll be a PTA meeting tomorrow. At Tibbetts Elementary, they had their avid college wear day on March 4th. Their students got to enjoy a family fun night at trackside roller rink with a turnout of over 100 skaters.
Oh my God.
On Wednesday, their student council is holding a fundraiser by selling mini stuffed animals for $2 for the Valley of Kings or Valley of the Kings in Sharon, Wisconsin, which is the animal rescue service. Then at... Their forward testing is being planned for the week of March 22nd. The enrollment plan is being started since it's all ready. And then... And then also began for that year. And then students went to Hosa home and had a broth child with someone who you might recognize. Start about actual approach building a custom home. And later in this week on March 10th, they're going to actually visit the site of the home building. And then learn about how the whole experience goes down. And then they also created a video highlighting the experience and study that they undertake as a popularity of the academy growth. And that is all I have for you.
I skipped right over you here. Just waiting for this. Couple months ago, we approved an updated policy regarding our facility usage. And at that time, the board requested for... And Mr. Anzalone, look at the facility, please, and come back and present to the board if we have not updated those in a number of years. So for the panel, Mr. Anzalone? Yeah, thank you, John Anzalone, Community Engagement Coordinator for the Districts. Yeah, so I think the last time we really looked at this was when I first started, three years ago, and kind of went through some of the facilities, maybe not all of them. So yeah, so I just, before we really get looking into this, if you click the facility calendar on top, it'll take us to the link. I wanted to show you what the facility calendar looks like. So if we just put high school here. Right like that? Uh, no, nope, if you hit the text, you should get a drop down. Oh, okay.
From the arrow in the right?
Yeah, the arrow.
I'm sorry.
You have the arrow.
You can get one no matter where you do it. All right.
You have to start with location.
Go down, uh...
There you go.
Get their location.
Nope, you don't want to do the two top ones. I'm sorry, I was one above you, go building. There you go. And then down under here where it says just check availability. So if you scroll down, this is kind of what just the high school looks like. I'm sure Annie and Toby can attest to. It's busy, it gets a lot of use, which is good. There's a lot of different people, whether school groups or community groups or even outside groups that are utilizing it. For sure they have found us. It's amazing the quality gets from all over. In fact, coming up in Polaris Football, needed a place to practice and play. And they're coming down here driving an hour and a half to, because they don't want to tear up their football field. So, and that's a good thing, that's a good thing. So, yeah, I just wanted to quickly scroll down that. And we can, is Wisconsin Milton coming? They came twice already, yes. Yep, Wisconsin Milton has come. Richmond Burton got ahold of us and looked for a couple of practice dates. And I just want to point out, this was Sunday.
Wow.
And look at the ending time, if you scroll down, 10 o'clock.
Wow.
Good. But yeah, Milton, Lloyd Turner, football teams that come and lots of the other ones. But yeah, crazy, crazy good. Do you want me to go back to there or? No, that's fine, we can go on to the next slide, thank you. So this, some of the schools throughout this that were comparable depending on the facility. With Burleyton was Coach Smith's show, Badger, Bigfoot, Verona. Does anybody know why, like, I know Kimberly is a paper maker, but what is that thing?
Paper wok.
Is that a wok?
Is that what it is, a paper wok?
I think so, yeah.
Okay, thanks. All right, moving along. Plymouth, Rylander, Kekana, Sussex, Hamilton, Williams, Baywatch, Monica.
And then the ghost for a couple of...
What's it?
Kekonic ghost.
Kekonic ghost.
Yes, and the Hodex from Rylander.
Yep.
Yes. So looking at our agility center, for the entire facility, we charge $100 an hour. For half of the facility, $50 an hour. This is, and that, those costs are beyond our youth groups, local groups, local 501, CDs, that type of thing. So when we're talking about that, we're talking about those local for-profit groups. Sussex, Hamilton, and Kimberly do not provide much access outside of limited youth groups. So they don't rent theirs out, their agility center out to basically anybody other than Sussex does the Wisconsin Football Coaches Association Combine. So they've decided that, yeah, it's going to be used by us and they limited some of our youth groups when we approve it. I put on the bottom of each one referendum or no referendum because I think sometimes that plays into their feeling of who should use it or what, how wide open the youth should be. Sussex, when we went and visited them, they had shared that they chose to use their, how you put it, their fund balance basically to pay for it.
But you know who pays into that fund balance? The homework.
Well, sure. And then I think they also received criticism because they used their fund balance and they turned around and needed a referendum.
Oh.
Where people point out, well, maybe you shouldn't have used your...
Yeah.
How do you ask for a referendum when you just dropped $5 million from your fund?
Yeah.
Either way, it's, you know, community approval is something. Yeah, Plymouth is 40 for half, or 70 for full. You can see, they even charge their community youth for use of it. And then the community is up to 90 with a $25 utility fee on top of that. And if it's a for-profit or private, it's $120 plus a $25 utility. Rylander, the only reason I put them, they just put up a large facility between their middle school and high school. And it's one of those huge domes like that at the Chula Vista, if you haven't seen that?
Yeah.
It's 100 yards, it contains pickleball courts, tennis courts, golf simulators. They can put two softball fields on the 100 yard. And how they, how they paid for that was the school put in, I think, $4 million and then the community raised the rest. And so it was a joint effort. So it's this kind of community rec center, school use building where the fire classes use it, the sports use it. And they're $100 for half and $200 for the full. Again, not every one of those facilities is the exact same size they are, but comparable use, comparable purpose, that type of thing. Gymnasiums, we're at 88 for the first three hours, $35 for every hour after that. And then our smaller high school, middle school auxiliary and elementary are 25 for the first hour and 15 after. You can see where those others fall as far as we're... It's in that ballpark. I guess if you look at it, we're not identical to anyone. Whereas Burleyton's at that 54, 20, Westosha is at the 40. They, they choose to go a weekday and weekend. And I'm sure that probably has to do with some custodial hours or opening hours, someone to open the gift for them. And then the local youth is zero, except on weekends, their youth group pays that $20 an hour. Yeah, so what you find going through this is it depends on the school's philosophy. You know, and what their philosophy is for, for use and what groups pay what, or actually what fees they even attach to it. Out to our stadiums. Wilmut was just, this is what they gave me, that's what they had now. They were revising it a little bit. They had stopped renting it out at all, their track and football field. We're going to be going back to that. I thought it was interesting, the 75 an hour, 800 for a game. Now, he qualified that by saying if it was a conference school, they would negotiate some sort of agreement. That was more for outer conference schools that may follow when they have games. And then other groups, private, they went to 1200. And basically, I think this somewhat discouraged that.
Sure. Yeah.
And then they charged $100 for the lights, but, you know. Yeah. And then it's funny because you go to the Bigfoot... And then it's funny, because you go to the Bigfoot, which has their new facility. And they were, you know, a hundred dollars an hour plus additional cost for license board, which is quite a bit different from what Wilmut's philosophy was and how they wanted to handle that.
I wonder if, because Wilmut had one of, they would have been one of the early church builds. And I wonder if they were looking more into college comparables, but, because that's, I, when I was in Glarus, we had to rent flats.
Okay.
Filled once and they charged us a thousand dollars for the game.
That might be.
But I, because I haven't seen any other schools charge closely that, I, I don't, yeah.
And like I said, they were revisiting it now, going through that to see where they were at and how they felt with the others. Um, and then West OSHA, who also has a church stadium. Was again considerably different than Wilmut, but closer to what they put was, but for there. But I thought it was interesting, um, charging a game, a game or competition fee, not for that amount, but I think depending on what your feelings are on that, if you charge a hundred dollars an hour for your softball field, and someone would like to host a tournament there, that could get pretty expensive at, you know, eight, nine thousand dollars a day. Or if you're thinking, hey, if that would equal a thousand, let's charge six hundred for the day. And you know, that all depends on how you feel about that. All right, um, outdoor stadiums continue. Maguano, Plymouth, and Verona.
What's the, where Maguano says like nonprofit, ten dollars an hour, and then font?
Competition is a hundred dollars an hour. Yep, if you want to host it against versus just practice.
For the, for the profit.
Yeah. Um, yeah, their lights are fifty. You know, and again, ours is a hundred dollars an hour.
Do we charge, do we charge separately for white or not?
Lights, scoreboard, P A. If there's any custodial time that needs to go into that, or any worker that needs to be there. Yep. Um, our auditorium is eighty-eight dollars for the first three, thirty-five after that. Um, you can see, and I'm not sure about the Burlington one on the bottom, that was what their price sheet they gave me was, but that seems a little far off for an auditorium than the others. I don't know. That was an old price that was on there. Yeah, and generally, it seems most schools are, you know, for their local community groups, park and rec. It's either very reasonable or no charge at all. I think we do a really good job at that, at, at taking care of our community that way. Um, and I think that comes back to us, for sure. And then the church softball fields. Badger was also revisiting their fees for their church field. They said they have not rented their church softball field out early at all. And, um, yeah, we're at that twenty dollars an hour, but the way that they had talked, it sounds like that was going to go up considerably to be able to do that. And then Bigfoot again was seventy dollars per game for the two of them. I think they put philosophy from talking to them was with that four field complex, they really wanted to attract competition, you know, companies running tournaments, things like that. And so they went with that competition for every two hours is seventy dollars.
So then they would, so in their minds, uh, we get the tournament there, so they're getting two hundred and eighty or two hundred and eighty dollars an hour for a game.
Yes, and.
So it's per game, per field?
Per game, per field.
Got it.
And, um, their local school groups run the concession room. They had done really well last year with that. And their community had seemed, was pretty happy with the business that they were getting in their hometown and surrounding area. So considerations that came out of this, I guess, just more suggestions, some things that came to my mind was it might be time to have a policy committee look at, um, where we're at with our fees, as well as you'll see, I should have put it right below it, but I won't, looking at the tiers that we have in there now, that, that we have four tiers of who pays and who doesn't pay. And I'll explain that more as we go. Um, so yeah, review that fee schedule. Some places had a consumable fee for large groups, meaning if there was, let's say, Wisconsin Youth Basketball League who travels to different facilities for the youth to play. Was at our facility and they were playing games all day, that consumable fee added on to that for the toilet paper, paper towel, things like that. Now, you have to figure out what that is. Phil and I were talking today. Not just pulling the number out of the air, but going, okay, what's, what does that look like for use of that? But some added that, I thought that was kind of a good idea, um, to be able to replace those things. A utility fee for larger spaces, some charge a flat rate in that twenty-five dollar ballpark, so, you know, the lights and things like that. Looking at that facilities rate for the main gymnasium and the auditorium, I'm not sure whether that came about with the eighty-eight dollars for the first three hours and then an hourly rate after that. It would seem from a scheduling perspective, easier to have that solid rate of it's this much an hour per hour, um, versus that first three, and then we go to one. And that was for the, uh, the Suki Gym as well. It was twenty-five for the first hour and fifteen for every hour after. And I don't, I'll get somewhere along the line, I don't know how long ago, and I think we looked at two thousand. What?
Nineteen ninety-nine.
Ninety-nine, okay, thank you.
Wow.
Um, is how that started, so I'm sure they had good reasoning at the time, but maybe time to revisit that as well. A custodial flat rate for events that, events that don't need a custodian. What happens is, we just hosted an event last week, this, uh, Crane City Combines. They do football skill combines and things like that. And I was there and let them in. They got set up. They did their event. Uh, I was there for when they closed up. So they didn't need a custodian there. But afterwards, there were all these garbage cans that were full, which took time for the custodian the next day out of their normal duties. So considering some sort of rate in those cases where it's not a custodial fee, but a fee of, hey, it took them an hour, the next day it's been, you know, after those garbage cans.
Yep.
Um, a cancellation fee, and I don't know, I just threw in there seventy-two hours. I don't know what that is. So someone doesn't reserve something and pulled it off from someone else and then canceled that day before, yeah, I decided I'm not going to do it. That there needs to be that late time so someone else would have the opportunity to use that facility.
We don't have one right now, no?
We do not have one right now. No.
Do we get many cancellations?
Um, I wouldn't say a lot. Um, but there always seems to be those few that I think they knew before, but just were kind of laying on the draw like, oh, this.
Yeah.
A lot of people ask about it. Do you have one?
Right.
Um, no. You're tempted to say yes?
Well, what, what's your venue do? So, yeah.
Right, yeah.
Uh, and I think that's their way of checking to see how careful they need to be in their plan.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah. So yeah, I think that would be helpful.
Yep.
And then this is back to what I was talking about, the group four and the group five, that if, if the board so chooses to go, hey, I think we need to revise these fees a little bit and maybe up some of them. I think it would be prudent to take our number four, which we have now, and keep that our community for-profit organizations. Leave that fee right where it is now and make a number five that is non-community for-profit or nonprofit. So we're looking at those outside of our district, here's your fee. Those inside your district, here's your fee. In order, I guess, to continue that relationship, like, hey, it's this for us, but if you don't have a prop, a business in our corner of the district, then it's this. Um, because I think they're stakeholders and they have some skin in the game in town for sure. So those are just some suggestions. Um, yeah, I'd love to visit this at the policy level commit, or policy level and, and be a part of that and bring some of the things that, you know, I guess struck me as I was going through this. So, thank you. Any questions?
What I'd like to do is ask John to go ahead and, and proper recommendation for the policy committee. And I like the, the concept of that and that fifth tier for the non-community based groups.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Did, did we have anyone pick heart in the Crane City? How much? We did not. In fact, by the time we booked it and I called him and said, hey, do you have that flyer? He goes, I do. It filled up in two days.
Oh, wow.
Oh, it did. Yeah, in fact, they had like a hundred and forty kids, so they had to do a morning session, an afternoon session, even smaller. And, uh, yeah, it just, it filled up like that.
Do we do any kind of a survey? Would it be online or paper for those outside entities coming in? So we get a feel of maybe what they would be willing to pay or what they like or dislike about the facility or the location or whatever.
Um, no, I haven't, but that's, that's a good idea.
Yeah, I mean, not the locals, but the, the ones that are coming in from outside, you know, I mean, obviously, they, they might have a connection for you or you know, something else. But it'd be nice to see if we're going to do prices, if this is going to make a difference as well, too.
Like if you give your server a five star, do you get a discount kind of thing?
We know, we know where.
Yeah, no, I like that.
Where our strengths might be. Maybe they don't want to pay extra. They like us because we do a flat fee and we're not charging like nickel and diming them.
Sure.
Um, so that's where I was coming from.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
Right.
Because right now it's just verbal. It would be nice to have some hard data to show that.
Right.
Even with our, our local groups, I think that would be good data to have.
Sure. Even some of those flat fee things, if there's things that we're not thinking of, that we could provide, that they would pay additional for, what does that look like?
Sure.
Right. I mean.
Like what are we, what are we?
Yeah, what are we not providing? Correct. What are we not providing that we could?
Right.
That they're not providing.
Right.
That they would like to have provided.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right, all right, now we're at COVID.
Okay, um.
We're all trying not to go there.
Um, yeah, and, and overall, we are focused school. We're doing very good as a school district. We did have, unfortunately, um, some employees that were recently impacted who, um, worked together and, um, one who's struggling right now to recover, there's some of those families, you know.
Yeah.
And then he can, uh, he, uh, sit here for it. But overall, other than that, there's a school district we're doing very well. Um, right now, you can see that we don't have, uh, we have the one active, uh, confirmed case. The individuals work district wide, that's why it was in the district. Um, numbers, that was three, it's down to one now. Um, but other than that.
What's funny, it says three point seven percent for one person. When you, when you look at that, it's just, so.
That's because it's probably twenty-seven.
I, I know, I know. But that's where you have to look at all the statistics, too.
Right, right. Yep, so other than that, we don't have, um, anybody out other than the one person due to quarantine at school and the one person is sick and then due to exposures outside of school. We still have a handful that's sitting around.
Yeah.
So the prevalence rate is low within the school district and, uh, within the county. Our, you know, experience reflects that. So we're doing well with that. We do have, um, a plan together to hold prom on April tenth. That'll be our first large school activity where kids are coming together. We've taken some extra precautions. It's not the Grand Geneva, um, which would have been a smaller space anyway, but they kicked us out for winning. Um, we'll still have post-prom over there. Um, but it will afford us to spread out more, um, here at the school building and we're able to open it up so that more students can attend if they would like to. So we'll have the gym open and then we'll have other activities in the agility center, which is designed just to reduce the numbers in that gym space. Um, so we'll have some activities going on in the agility center as well. Um, Mrs. Trotier's worked very hard to get us set up as a eligible to do rapid testing, um, here within the district. So she requested and received a waiver for that. She worked directly with Abbott Labs to acquire, um, tests. So I believe we committed to purchase, well, I think, um, three thousand tests initially. At first, they told us you have to buy ten thousand tests. And then they came back and said, we just changed our protocols. You can do three thousand tests and you have to procure them over a six-month period. So we're going to go ahead and get the first thousand, um, for the end of the year so we can use them for prom. And then like, if there's an eighth grade moving on party and or I don't know if there's going to be a, I don't, I don't think they're doing a project graduation, but if they were to or they want to, then we have them for them.
Can you go and just like, how, how does that roll out? Everyone at the door get?
Yeah, so we'll do it now. They'll have to do it within twenty-four hours of the dance. So, um, Mrs. Trotier's going to set up a, a testing over at the high school on the Friday.
Okay.
Um, prior, yeah, she and then she'll have some other nurses come in and there's protocols on those. They have a whole software module and a Q R code. Um, similar to, it sounds like similar to the Whitewater system. So they'll set that up. Everyone will go through the, in this case, the nurses have to be swabbing on the Abbott test. So they'll swab them.
Oh, you don't do it to yourself?
No, I, that's what she said. I, I, up in Whitewater, I.
Right. You do it to yourself.
Oh, my gosh.
So, um, yeah, so that will be a requirement to go to the dance. And if there's somebody who's coming from outside of Epping, they'll still need to get the rapid.
That's what I'm saying. Are we allowing?
No exemptions, no, I don't believe in getting tested, nothing like that. That's free.
But we're allowing other students from other schools to attend our prom?
But because of the testing.
Yeah.
So, um, and we need to be in the, the low, moderate range, which we are right now. So if you see a spike, we'll postpone.
So does that mean, um, during the dance, are we eliminating the mask mandate?
Uh, no, the, the face coverings will still be, uh, that's still following guidelines. And I know it's not following all guidelines, because it's all guidelines, they come to a dance, you know, leaving people there. So there's a, a limit to the number of guidelines we're allowed.
Alright.
To give the kids the experience. I mean, we, we want to have, you know, not throw all caution away, but
Right.
I feel like this is as best as, you know. And, and the rapid tests are ninety-seven point six percent accurate is what Abbott Labs, their spending's or whatever. Yeah, that's the plan. And, uh, Mrs. Jacobs has worked very hard getting that together and hopefully they'll give a little bit of sense of normalcy. I know the current seniors, they had their prom plus fun, which it was really not, yeah, by the time they had it, it wasn't like prom, they'd have homecoming, then have the smoke. Yeah, the junior stands will, hopefully it's enough to handle. Right? I don't know, any thoughts? I'm curious for the student reps, any feedback on, I had one phone call where the parent was upset that we were doing the rapid testing, that their kid wasn't going to go, they had to do rapid testing.
That's her choice.
He said, no, I'm sorry, that's.
Well, we said if they're positive and case the genetics and now it's in the quarantine, I was wondering if we're not going to run into like a liability issue there?
No, you mean as far as like, when they tested positive?
Well, we are, we are going to know, right?
Well, we would know.
Well, the, the district nurse would know.
Okay, she would know.
No, they're not going to be quarantined.
Okay.
Even though they.
I, I think, well, we'd probably do it there easily. And we may run into a couple of kids who test positive and maybe the contact carries some quarantine and or probably issue another probably retesting. First, but that could happen.
And if for some reasons they, they can't come because of that, we would refund the money for the, okay, alright.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if we're going to have a few upset family. Because. Correct.
Yeah, exactly.
And the parent was very appreciative of that as well. He said, we're probably the only high school recently.
That's right.
That's for sure that did prom.
Yep.
And we're doing it again. And because we're doing it, it's also encouraged some of our areas. Well, so we're now alone this time. A number of the area schools have been doing it.
Is the administration sending out a letter then? Obviously, for all the.
I included in the update, I'm sure the high school.
Yes.
I don't know, have you guys already received something on it? Um, I know they did a survey to see how many people were wanting to go.
I just think any formal, you know, such as this stuff, but there has. I just didn't get any formal feedback with this stuff, but there has been just chatter with the stuff I could be going on.
Like I have Miss Jacob in class and she like just constantly like reminding us stuff about prom.
She also surveyed, it sounded like she said that it was only three hundred and sixty five responding.
Oh, yeah, there was a.
Yeah.
So we're breaking the tradition of Elkhorn canceling dances and, uh, I don't know if you guys remember from the eighties, I was seeing YouTube links.
I am.
Was that the nineties?
I know, that was ninety.
That was ninety, yeah.
It was the nineties, yeah.
That was.
Long story.
You'll have to go watch it on YouTube. You'll get a kick out of it. See all, all these adults now around town.
All the terrible things that they did.
Man, I can't, administration was just like, oh, you're from the news media? Come on inside. Dr. Our kids in the hallway. And then let's roll.
Couple walking down the hall.
Look it up on YouTube. It was a snowball dance, right?
Definitely.
I think so.
Yeah, it was, it was pretty humorous. There's, there's like a whole, uh.
What loops?
Ten fifteen, I put up all the national broadcasts and the national news.
Yep.
CNN, all of that, different maps, the world.
My goal is never to reach the papers, but it ran.
But anyway. Yeah, things are, things are going well there. Well, I would say as well, the, the first round of vaccines were available for the staff that wanted the vaccines. And I think we had over two hundred and eighty staff take advantage of that, um, between last Friday and last Saturday. And it was, it was actually a very neat experience because you had educators from all over the county at, at Mercy. And the, I can tell to, to me, I thought there was a lot of excitement, a lot of, yeah. People, very happy people that they were able to get, get the vaccines. It's at that point, so. So I handled COVID. We have a number of personnel items. A number of retirements. It is that time of year. Uh, we wanna thank Mary Ellen Wright, who has been a social worker for the school district for many years. Nora Judd, a social studies teacher over at the middle school. And Donna Mahiifi, uh, head coach out at Tibbetts. And we wanna thank them and congratulate them for all of their years of service. Uh, we also have a resignation of, uh, Kathy Gordon, who's a special education teacher at Westside. A resignation of Sarah Kozlowski, a middle school teaching assistant. A resignation of Jeff Brown as the girls' basketball. Uh, this is from the middle school. He had already designed the, uh, head coach of the high school. Um, and then a resignation of Amanda Matsky as a girls' bar ball assistant coach. Uh, Reece Stiglitz is a support staff teaching assistant at Jackson. Um, I'm sorry, that's an appointment for a break. An appointment of Michael Wing.
Wing. Wing.
As a Tibbetts head custodian. Appointment of Jose Sanchez as a head custodian at Westside. And the appointment of Nathan Piaccino as a baseball assistant coach. And that's so, you still have one opening, John, or is that?
I do, still have one more.
All right, for the personal. Any questions? Hearing done. I get the motion.
Um, I'll move to through the personal recommendation sheet, part eight, twenty twenty one, including new employment contracts, condition of passing, background check, and district mandated drug screening as presented.
Is there a second? Then move the second to through the personal recommendation sheet, the March eighth, twenty twenty one, including new employment contracts, condition of passing, the background check, and district mandated drug screening as presented. No problem. Mr. Fisher?
Yep.
Mr. Gayheart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Sparrow?
Yes.
Ms. Gerkowski?
Yes.
And Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Okay, I do not have any school guests to present to the meeting. Then we'll go to school calendars. Okay, um. We, um, get up quite ways ahead when we're approving the school calendars, but we do have a revision that would like to reflect the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two school calendar first. And as we're looking at the, the training, Abbott district wide, and also in light of our, we're in harmony with our new, um, school district anti racism policy. There's a training that Abbott does that our staff members who have gone through it give it very high marks and often will say that it's the most powerful, um, best training that they've ever had. And, um, Amy or Sarah, could you share, I'm sorry, the, the exact title of the training, it's in my mind. It's on, um.
Culturally relevant teaching practices.
We'd like to show that all of our district staff have that training. And the only way to do that is to bring the, the Abbott trainers in, cause they put a cap on how many people can attend the training. And so we'd like to do that, add one more in-service day. We have many extra instructional days built in. So we'd like to take that one instructional day and on that Tuesday following Martin Luther King Day, we'd like to schedule in, um, that culturally relevant training for our district staff. Um, both our aides and our teachers on that.
Still looking at seventeen eighteen.
And seventeen eighteen. It just, and it is, we didn't just pick that because Martin Luther King Day, it's the way we have our trainings kind of collated and set up that fits well. We also wanted it in time in the school year where we still have a bulk of the school year to implement.
Where does the trimester start and end in that?
Well, the trimester is ending, let's see, so the trimester starts around the first part of December.
Okay.
After November break, yeah.
Well, it's not June.
So it's.
So if we were on a semester schedule, that would be problematic.
So it's not falling at the end?
Right.
Okay.
So wanted to first ask for that approval of that revision to next year's calendar. It would reduce the number of contracted days of just, um. And, uh, any questions or any comments? Hearing done?
I move to approve the revised twenty twenty one, twenty two school calendar as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Move the second to approve the revised twenty twenty one, twenty two, twenty two school calendars presented. Mrs. Fisher?
Yeah.
Mr. Gayheart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yeah.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yep.
Mrs. Gray?
Yeah.
Mr. Sparrow?
Yes.
Ms. Gerkowski?
Yeah.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Motion carried. Okay, twenty two, twenty three. Twenty two and twenty three is a very similar, um, week structure to the, um, how do we put it? To the, to the previous year's calendar. Um, so it, it's very similar to that prior year. Now it has one hundred and seventy one days instead of a hundred and seventy days because we're not doing that two day again. Otherwise, the calendar, the way the holiday break falls in December is very similar. Um, I'm a big fan of the two weeks, but I got severely outvoted by my team.
I would admit.
Probably rightfully so. Because of how early that would be December next year.
Usually we've been following the end of March at this point.
Yes.
So why?
This is another, and this is, I'm okay with the board not wanting to go that direction, but the reason why is because, yeah, Easter's really early, um, this year. And even though, I don't know, it's.
Oh, is it the nineteen?
Politically correct ability of the schedules around that, we do have in our, um, employment contract still Good Friday.
Yeah.
Um, off as well as.
So it must be March nineteenth.
Yeah, so it's, I believe it's April ninth is Easter. So Friday would have been off. So we would have had spring break, come back for four days and then have a Friday off. So rather than doing that, the suggestion was to bump spring back.
So Easter really late this year. Wait, is that, has that ever, I've only been here a few years. Has that ever happened where it's kind of bounced back to being that? My knowledge is always that last.
Prior to, I, we switched the, yeah, prior to me, it, it, I think, varied with Easter one.
Yeah, it did. How does that, how does that affect baseball?
I recommended we switch it to the set week. So this is deviating from that set week.
That's what I thought. I just asked him how it affected baseball.
But if the board feels, the preference would be to keep that set week.
A part of it, we set the week two because of other schools that surrounded some conference and all that.
Right.
Easier trying to schedule things. That's what went to that.
Yeah, and half of them pegged the Easter and half of them pegged to that last week in March. And, and we're the first ones out of the week, so I don't know if we're going to peg it to Easter or March.
And it really messes up baseball. I will go to bat for you on that.
Alright, alright, thank you.
Well, and we're looking at the tenth, April tenth. This is no school.
It's an answer to this thing.
Right, so, I mean, if, if Easter's a night, are people gonna wanna come? I mean.
That's kind of a new thing, though. We didn't always used to have the day after Easter off.
I, I know, I know, but I mean, if we're moving it for now.
Well, we've been doing the end service day of the day after.
It's not equal week if we move it. If we put it back to March, then we have eleven.
Then we have one more. We need to adjust the end of the school.
A little break wise is being.
Well, we could, no, we could.
You're breaking. No, it's a break. Oh wait, you pump the week.
You mean going back to like the crystal plate?
No, from, yeah, uh, yeah.
So if, if we move, if we move the Easter, not Easter, if we move the spring break.
Yeah.
Back to this last week in March.
Yeah.
Then this Good Friday, there'll be one more day off in the calendar. So what we would need to do is the simple is we'd just move the end of the school day back by one.
So on Thursday.
Because the Friday before Easter, we would have off as a holiday, because it's our full.
Correct, but don't, isn't typically the last day of school like the eighth, like Thursday or at Friday?
It's in that second week in June.
Yeah, so this that.
So it varies, it's now I'm gonna.
Okay. I, I guess, I, people, the, the problem we have when we move it all over the place.
Yeah.
People who wanted to take family vacations.
Right.
Could never, like, they make, they make appointments, they schedule things years ahead, you know, all we do it. So I see it being an issue.
Yeah, I do.
Okay, then let's modify this.
Covid, who knows?
I hear people saying that it's too late. If it's in April, it's too late.
Yeah.
They wanna get out of, out of town when the weather's still bad.
So let's move it back to March.
Yeah.
If it's separated, move it back to March, we'll leave it on that last week in March. And then we'll move the last day of school to the eighth. And that still gets the teachers their last day on the morning.
Right, and we'll play it on baseball.
One more item, and I, I meant to bring it up on the prior year's calendar. Um, one of the, the items, and, and this is something, I'd, I'd like feedback from the board. I don't have a proposed here, but we could still modify calendars. I'd like the students input it as well. This year, there was a, um, unintentional mistake and we're not certain exactly how it happened. The seniors are the benefits of this. Where on the internal senior calendar document, it was released, there was an idea that we were toying with, but we didn't present it or bring it to the board for approval. And that was shifting the end date of seniors, moving it up to allow them to get out.
Yeah.
And get working on their jobs, but also give the guidance office more time to, okay, this is senior's last day, we can finalize scholarships, grades.
Yeah.
And so forth. Well, then Covid hit and we don't know how it ended up on the senior calendar in August, uh, or when it got sent out to the seniors. And by the time the administrators caught it, uh, the seniors already had their hearts set on, uh, they felt it was too late to walk back.
Yeah.
That you guys are getting out early. So this year, the seniors are getting out. What is it? It's like a, a week earlier than, um, they normally would.
Oh, really?
But there's no finals, so it doesn't have, um, that impact. So it's really about two days of instruction difference that they're, they're missing.
Do they have enough, do they have enough hours?
Yeah, there's, and that's what it's kind of, um, up north, it was very common and, uh, where I taught and where I was a principal the first year. That once AP testing was done, we did the graduation the following week, even before Memorial Day.
Wow.
And then the seniors were gone the last two or three weeks of the school.
You were in gone last week.
Yeah, and it allowed them to get out, get the summer jobs, get working at the resorts and get out of the hair of the rest of the building. And let the juniors kind of step up and get that orientation. It was a neat, I always loved that, that timeframe. And for the seniors who weren't that, it also gave them incentive because, well, guess what? You're still gonna be coming back.
Okay, so we, we do have that. I was wondering, it's like just all of a sudden your job really not, your project was done or?
Yeah, and there may be a class or two where it's a transcript that would gateway, if the seniors aren't finished with what they need to be done, then the teachers can, hey, you guys need to come in, just do that.
Yeah.
Um, so anyways, the reason I bring that up now is one idea that I guess it wouldn't hurt to ask the board and we could always seek public input if we wanted. But, you know, are there any thoughts about moving graduation to like the Friday before Memorial Day weekend?
Parents.
In time along the weekends.
I know, parents. It doesn't matter to me, honestly, though. I know that was always a complaint.
Right.
In this community.
Right.
That how come, um, the one over by Lewis Bay, they always get out and.
Bank pressure.
Different ones.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But you, just this, this calendar year?
Well, we could still do next year. We haven't sent out the senior calendar yet.
I just wanted to clarify what year we're talking about.
No, but I mean, that's something I'd have to bring again and revisit, but I wanted the board input on that. That was one item in this calendar too. I didn't, I didn't wanna be presumptuous. Originally, I kind of moved it up there. I think it's a good idea, but I haven't gotten a lot of feedback from others. Um, it would be if you do graduation at the Memorial Day weekend, then seniors would probably be down on the twenty fourth, which would be well after AP testing. And give the time to calculate the grades and stuff. But, well, the twenty.
Gotta get their. Get them on it.
Do we, do we separate the AP testing and finals for seniors?
Well, wait, when is Memorial, was Memorial Day?
Memorial Day, that, that's March. Yeah, we gotta go to that. We've started twenty.
Memorial Day weekend would be, so graduation would be the twenty sixth.
Right, so your day later would be done the twenty fourth.
So they'd be done the nineteenth.
It'd be done the nineteenth? Oh, wow. So AP testing is that second weekend made, but then when they do AP test in one week and then finals the next week can be done? Is that?
Or. Well, in, in, in my experience, when we did that, the seniors kind of had to work ahead to finish that final project or be ready for that final exam. Or they still came back to finish.
I know it doesn't. You're like, I just wanted to be done.
I know, are, are like all of my. Parties for the third try classes are.
Because all your APs.
Are there, yeah, and, and I feel like a lot of kids that aren't in any classes have like their classes third try.
There are some that, no, there's some that don't like that the seniors are done on their downers.
And mixed classes also, when you have juniors and seniors, sophomores, juniors and seniors. And how do you have other requirements of the class when the seniors are already excused?
How does that affect spring sport participation?
They still have to follow the same policies and guidelines.
I mean, is, is there someone there, like, whether it be Amy or, um, Sarah to work with those staff members? That need to find that happy space to do, be able to do this?
Sarah, do you wanna check in on that?
Is that, is that who, is that who would be helping now?
Can Barbara answer a question?
Can Barbara have a question?
Yeah. More than one doctor in your class or that are used to the traditional way that they seniors go until the last day. Um, would you be the one to help them if we change this to to get that to work?
There's a lot of feedback. I'm sorry. It's hard to hear.
Would you, how much help would the teachers need and can they get the, for those who have concerns about?
No, I think it would just take some time to figure out how we would handle that. That's all. I don't think it it would be too complicated to figure out what we would do with the rest of the students. They'll be there after this in your sleeve.
We have. Calendar approval as.
Yes, so if we set the grad, the graduation, sorry, I keep going in the wrong month. If we set graduation on the twenty-seventh, that still gives us leeway to work with the staff to determine what is that final day with seniors. Maybe it's not the twentieth. Maybe it's the twenty-fifth. And you know, that's enough time.
Right.
And we can still work with and determine what that last week would do. But what I found interesting is a lot of you gave immediate feedback that you think the families would really like having graduation take the Memorial Day weekend. And we could always put that out in a survey and a vote, or I don't know if that's necessary or needed.
Friday, so would be the Friday or be be Thursday. Like we typically have done no one.
I.
That's why I'm asking.
Yeah, right. You're right. Graduation's typically on a Thursday.
Thursday.
Right.
I I guess I'm not.
My my thought was, my thought, but I don't care. My thought was on a Friday just because for family travel, that might be.
Coming in town.
Easier coinciding with Memorial Day. Some places do the graduation on Saturday.
Yeah, right.
We could do it on Saturday, on Memorial Day weekend.
I just, I'm just saying.
But then again, since I've been here, do you know how many email complaints I've gotten about where graduation is at right now?
Right.
Zero. I've never gotten one.
I think it's because it's been.
It's just the way it's been.
Right.
You know, I heard it due to. Way back when on Thursday.
So. Way back. I don't even think we have graduation.
Moving it will create workplace than what I.
Probably right. Probably right. I agree. So right now it's scheduled for the night.
We just kept it, no, right now, we kept it for the second of June on the Thursday, just like we always.
Got it.
But I just wanted to bring that up because we've never talked about.
Only getting, it would only get.
I know we, I, a lot of people say. Why can't we get out or whether you're, you know, parents are saying that. I I've heard that more. I don't know if you, I guess you being high school, it doesn't matter. You just want to get out at that point. Yeah, after the AP, um, the AP test, I'm just. Yeah.
Yeah, you haven't gotten to that point yet.
No, not.
Truthfully, I think back on what some of my kids did after AP test. It was a lot of fun stuff in the classroom and so you missed out on some of that.
Yeah.
But yeah, it wasn't like there was a lot of.
I do remember my kid saying, I don't even know why I'm going to class right now. Yeah.
Yeah.
I do remember being surprised, you know, every time you went through it, you're just. You got your missing bunch up, but you're mentally checked out.
Yeah.
And I do remember being the underclassmen, knowing the seniors were gonna be gone, and that was the best time of the entire year.
Yeah.
Yes, I mean, it just, it was. Because it kind of allowed the natural transition of now the juniors are the upperclassmen and you kind of fall back until you're. I mean, it just kind of, they brought in younger kids to do the tours then because there's less bodies and.
Yeah.
I mean, it was just, it kind of. I don't know, just like you up for the following year. So I would look at, but. That would be a long time. I'm okay with moving it.
Just, we're just move like.
Up up to you guys. Um, I know I usually like to give her a recommendation. I guess I would look at. Yeah, it it's gonna be one of those that's probably gonna be split either way.
Yeah, let's, I need.
Let's go ahead and approve it as is and we can revisit it. Maybe we get some more information first.
Yeah.
Make the decision. All right. Sorry to muddy the waters on that, but I thought it was a good, yeah, we just have never dropped that. Oh, moving the the calendar.
Right.
Is modify or?
Spring break.
To the March.
Yeah.
I'm on the wrong calendar.
Yeah, yeah.
You gotta go twenty.
Twenty twenty-two to twenty.
There it is. All right. With spring break on the week of March twenty-seventh to the thirty-first.
Right.
Motion.
I I'll move to approve the modified calendar for twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three um as amended.
Is there a second? Okay, we have motion, a second to approve the the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school calendar is modified. Mrs. Fisher?
Yeah.
Mr. Gayheart?
Yeah.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yeah.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Mr. Donald?
Yeah.
Mrs. Ray?
Sparrow? Yes.
Ms. Girkowski?
Yeah.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
All right, this Saturday is a school board budget workshop.
Yay.
I'll have some scrumptious treats there. Yeah. Told you and Anna, we've never had the students attend that, but you're more than welcome to.
Yes, you do not want to miss it.
Riveting.
Lots of. It is a lot of great information. Let's see, and I want to check and see if Thursday, April eighth to tenth will work for the next policy committee meeting.
Thursday, April, what was this?
Eighth at ten. I know it's kind of easy from there.
Is this gonna be a solar eclipse on twenty twenty-four?
I put it on my calendar. Yeah, I kind of thought. I mean, yeah, it 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 will be tough, so I'll figure something out.
All right. And then just reminder, we do have a closed session. You have a follow. Would you? Would you have that proposal together?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Put that proposal together for the new policy?
Yeah, but that's not time.
Yeah.
I'm looking for a motion to adjourn the closed session.
I move to adjourn the closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute nineteen point eighty-five from one from C to discuss the staff members apart. The school board will not reconvene in open session.
Is there a second? Move the second to present to adjourn the closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute nineteen point five-one-C to discuss. Mrs. Fisher?
Yeah.
Mr. Gayheart?
Yeah.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yeah.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Mr. Donald?
Yeah.
Mrs. Reed?
Yeah.
Sparrow? Yes.
Ms. Girkowski?
Yeah.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Motion carried.